All meeting to order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming, everybody. Hope everyone's got to enjoy some of the good weather we've been having. Roll call, please.
Sandy Kufel.
Here.
Chris O'Regan.
Here.
Kristi Hilton.
Here.
Artie Bryson.
Here.
Cindy Valentine.
Here.
Joanne Sherkey.
Here.
Mark Bouchard.
Here.
Okay, we're all here and counting four. Next, I accept entertaining motion for bills payable.
I'd like to make a motion to approve bills payable for $129,766.10.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Chris O'Regan.
Yes.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine.
Yes.
Joanne Sherkey.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Sandy Kufel.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we have public comments. Do we have any public comments? Might help state your name and address, please.
Patrick Fien, Harsons Island. Sorry for the less informal attire, but I was trying to catch that record fish and lock track of time.
I like your shirt.
Anyways, I thought it was extremely important that I be here in person to express my gratitude and thank you to the police department and the township. We had the good fortune of being away for some time this winter, and I stopped by and I notified the police department that we'd be gone. And, you know, I was kind of expecting, you know, maybe they'd stop by and look at the house and what have you, and they knew who I am, so no big deal. But when we came home, I received a detailed report of every visit to my home from every officer, what they observed, what they saw, and what they did. That was way beyond my expectations, and I got to thank, you know, the chief and his department and Artie. That's the way to run a township. Thank you very much.
Good program.
The next is, we had our, one of our island cleanups. We did the, we adopt the highway program here this last weekend, and we were joined by Chris O'Regan and his, along with your family. You know, somebody's got to pick that stuff up, and we did. It's getting better, and we've gotten a lot of comments about people walking and jogging about how good it looks. So, thanks, Chris, for showing up and all the other people that showed up and helped. You know, it's a jewel. We've got to keep it that way. And then, then the other thing, you know, we hear all this stuff about the fire department. We hear this, that, you know, the negative stuff. But there's positive stuff, a lot of it. In the, in the really heavy winds that we had here just this last couple of days, we had a couple of trees go down, block the roads. And before I could even say anything, Brian Sears led his team down the fire department to South Channel. They were out there cutting, stacking. I mean, it's kind of like what we do. So, thank you. And I'll see you, what we got, May 21st, we're going to be on the island, right?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Come up, state your name and the address.
I'm Jean Chapdellane, and I'm just here on behalf of the Youth Readiness Council. We were supposed to be giving a speech today, and my son was here, but the AV support had a family emergency, and we just found out two minutes ago that he wasn't coming. So, I apologize, but we'll have to reschedule.
Okay, yeah, let us know. If he has a PowerPoint, we could set it up.
We don't.
Oh.
The AV support had it, so.
Oh, okay.
Would have known he wasn't coming, I could have brought it.
Yeah, next time, just email to us or put on a little stick.
Thumb drive.
Awesome. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Yep?
Good evening, and thank you for affording me the opportunity. My name is Kenneth Nickel. I live in Yale, Michigan. Currently, I'm running for the 81st State Representative for Dan Lauer's seat. I'm here tonight just to introduce myself and perhaps put a name with the face, and I'm very mindful and respectful of your time, so I won't go into too much of a heavy background. I am married, I have three children. We build a house in St. Clair County, and then we build a home. And so, the beauty in my mind is this is a wonderful area to live in, and I heard a gentleman just say prior to this, this is a jewel, and I consider the entire St. Clair County being that jewel. I moved up here to God's country. I'm a gentleman farmer, and what those people would indicate that perhaps I'm neither, because currently I'm doing alfalfa, I've done soybean, I've done corn, and it's more of a hobby than anything. My goal here is to reach out and build a rapport, and then the second component is I'm going to reach out personally to Artie and find out what the initiatives and what the priorities for this council is, and certainly want to be aware of that. I know there are many issues and many challenges that face us today. I've currently, I'm an educator, I've been in education for over 30 years. I'm currently the superintendent of Yale Public Schools. The charge that we have is a very challenging one, certainly, but it's a very rewarding one. I collaborate very closely with the Board of Education, who supports the mission. I operate and am responsible for a budget that's just a little under $18 million. Certainly, I'm an advocate for kids, but much more than that. Especially in my position as a superintendent, I know and understand that there's a necessary component to make sure that your townships, that your municipalities and your district are kind of in lockstep with each other. It does nothing but strengthen the bond and relationship. In this area, you know, I'm an avid outdoorsman, and I look around here, it's just a beautiful area, and certainly, one of the things that we want to do is continue to preserve and protect your natural resources, so I'd certainly be a voice for that. Infrastructure is a term that gets thrown around a lot, but infrastructure, to me, is much more than just the mechanical components. It's also your fire, your police, you know, and it's important that we provide them with the necessary tools to do their jobs. And so, that's certainly, I will be out there being an advocate for that. Lastly, I don't come with you today to present many promises, because this is my first attempt in public office, other than the fact that I've been seated at the helm as a superintendent for eight years. Surprisingly enough, I'm the longest-seated superintendent in St. Clair County, which is another way of saying I'm just old, and that's okay. But I don't come to you with promises in a traditional sense, other than this, if I am blessed to receive the election and nomination for the 81st District, I promise you that I will work very diligently for our vested interest. Thank you again for allowing me to speak tonight.
Thank you. I look forward to having that conversation with you.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thanks for coming.
Any other public comments? Sherri, you have anything? No? Okay. Move right along to the consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the board meeting minutes of April 16th and synopsis, check reports, the March Water Report, April Assessing Report, the notice for weed ordinance publication, Treasury Department hours, nine to five on Friday, September 14th, 2018, for tax collection, which is, we're not typically open that day, the reason for the notice, and the Road Watch Report, communications, St. Clair County Health Department statewide septic code update, partners in progress, invitation for the board, and a request to review and re-adopt the ethics policies.
Support. Okay, have motion and support. Anyone want to pull anything out, or are we all good?
Yes, I want to make mention of the two workshops that the assessing department is going on. Normally, we, in this, it just says assessing, which was our, is our main report that we always get, but there's two flyers that, and I think they're very important, because one of them is with conjunction with the Treasury Department, and taxes and Treasury, you know, and assessing, and that'll be two people from the Treasurer's Department and two people from the assessing, and I think that's a good workshop to go to. And then the other one is just the art of public speaking for assessors.
We shouldn't let them speak in public.
No. Because people get mad at them, so they have to learn how to be nice.
Yes.
But I think it's just for public information that I bring this up.
That's my bad, Joanne, because I really didn't have it broke out earlier. So, I have no problem amending that motion to include the assessing training.
Okay, I was going to include, but I know you're busy with a few things tomorrow, so I'm not, I didn't want to call you out on that.
That's okay. So, I'll amend it to include the assessing, specifically the assessing training.
Yes. And we're paying for it, too, so, and it's not that expensive, and it's not that pricey. It's a good thing to go to.
Okay, anything else on the consent agenda?
For the ethics policies, there aren't any changes, correct? It's just reviewing and re-adopting.
Actually, our whole book is going to be coming up for review, but considering we are passing some other things pertaining to our fire department, we wanted to make sure that was just still part of our, on our radar as far as.
Reiterating.
Yep. Just wanted to make sure there was no changes.
No changes.
We didn't have to notify anyone.
Nope.
Same, same always.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. All right, supervisors' report. Received a report last, well, it was about 10 days ago, Friday, they called me up. DOT checked out the Flamingo Bridge and wanted to condemn it. That would have been scary, those people, it's their only way at home. And we got that knocked down to three ton, or the weight restriction was reduced down to three tons. Lots of phone calls with the road commission and their engineering department. Originally, they were saying it was going to be the whole summer. I got with them, and we came up to with an easier solution. They said, hey, we need some steel I-beams and a barge and a boat. Well, we got in the barge and the boat there and the steel I-beams, so they showed up today. They started working on it, and stopping, they might actually be done Wednesday, but they're saying that by the end of this week. And before, I mean, we all know this bridge needs to be replaced, and this week, also, I worked on getting some funding for that. It won't happen until November, October, November, but this is going to get us through that, and even the engineers are saying from MDOT and the road commission, it was a 16-ton bridge, it might be up to a 25-ton bridge after this Band-Aid. So, yeah, they're, they've been busy.
So, just to be clear, and sorry to interrupt you, what we're embarking on right now with the barge, the steel, the I-beams, this is a temporary repair?
Yep.
Right?
A Band-Aid.
Okay. And eventually, down the pipe here, we expect that bridge.
We're going to rebuild it like the one with Merrill Street.
Yep.
Okay?
Yep, just want to reiterate that.
I'm doing a lot of work with, on the Colony Water Main project, working with the engineers, get the bids out, and working with the bonding agents, and I expect to have something for this board, our first meeting in June, for it approved, to go forward with the bonding I wanted to mention to the board, disappointing the MAP, the Michigan Association of Firefighters Union, did not ratify the proposed contract that we came out of mediation. In our mediation, it was agreed, you know, the contract with us and the union reps, but it wasn't ratified by the membership. We're looking at a couple tweaks, and maybe we can get something done in the next week or two. If not, we'll be forced to, or we'll be going into forced and binding arbitration with that. Getting ready to go with outside exercise equipment, our park next door, we have it funded. I'm still waiting to hear on two grants that we applied for, and I think we got a pretty good shot at both of them. The two of them total up to be about $7,500. The bigger one was $5,500 with the National Real Estate Association, and they came out here, and they were very positive and receptive, and we should be hearing from them shortly. So, I'm holding off till we hear about, from them, and go ahead and get that project going. Putting in new, the bathroom partitions that we wired for on the last meeting, in the park bathrooms, they are, they're in tough shape. They're all rusted out, and one of them actually fell on one of our guy's hands and hurt him, broke a couple fingers, but he's doing okay. But that's moving ahead, and we're hoping to have the splash park open. Actually, we just, this kind of, was talking to John, we're going to try to get it open every year, the Friday before Memorial Day, and just make that a target, and then what we have to do is, you know, get everything operation, make sure all the pumps are going, good water with chloride right, and then we have to have the health department check it out before we put the open sign on it. Wednesday, I'm going to Lansing to testify in front of the MDEQ on our St. John's Marsh project. They are, and it's funny, you said something about that, Ken. It's a big roadblock, and basically, behind it, the DNR, and these guys are experts on managing wetlands, they're going to put a temporary road and about four foot of it is on an existing wetland, but that road's going to enable them to clear out and get flow and be very beneficial to probably over 1,000 acres of the wetlands in the back. And the DEQ's not letting him use the strip of four feet wetland temporarily.
It's difficult.
And so, I'm going to go out there and try, it's like you got gangrene on your finger. You know, you got to cut your finger to lose, or to save your arm, that logic, and they said, no, we're not going to let you cut that finger off.
And your fingernail file?
So, I'm going to be out there Wednesday morning, probably most of the day, testifying, and hopefully come back with some progress there.
Yeah, Artie, is the DNR or Ducks Unlimited going to be in attendance as well?
DU is going to be there, Waterfall USA. They really wanted me there, and I'm glad to do it. You know, the total, the total project is $1.4 million project, and it's going to, basically, what they want to do in the St. John's Marsh is what they do on the island in the reserve, and it works wonderful there, U-Hunt back there, Mark. And it would turn that St. John's Marsh into a jewel, where now is, we're raising good fragmities now. So, that's my Wednesday. We did have a meeting with our department heads on our ISO insurance rating for the fire department, for the township. It was at a six, and it improved, it was lowered, well, I say most, it was a six or a 10, depending on where you were. And it was lowered a full point to a five or a nine, which is going to reduce everybody's fire insurance. But we saw that where they didn't check into a lot of the areas, they didn't take into account our dispatch center and a few other things. We are having a meeting with them and getting them more information. It's going to get us close to a four. We're not, we don't think we're going to get a four, but it's going to get us close. So, with that in mind, it will give us what we need to know to make it get to a four the next time around. So, that's all good, saves everybody some money on their home insurance. So, that's a, that's a good thing. I did get a consent agreement last week, Friday, that we have a lot of blighted issue on the South, the Marina on the South Channel, it's Island, what's it called? What is it? Island something. Anyhow.
Island Yacht Club.
Yeah, Island Yacht Club. That's where the Sunken Boathouse is, and there's another sunken boat back there, and a few others. Basically, the agreement is, they have 60 days to remove it, and I gave, I was shooting for 45 days, but they said they were going to get a marine contractor to do that for them, and I said, well, I'll give you 60 days, but in 15 days, you have to have a signed agreement with a marine contractor to do the job. And any, every day after the 60 days, they're going to be fined $200 a day.
So, what's the timeframe right now for their?
I think, well, it's two, 60 days from, what was the third?
Thursday?
Yeah, from last Thursday. I believe that's when it was filed. We had our bike safety event next door, where we taught a bunch of kids how to ride their bikes safe, and gave them all free helmets, and that was a great success. We're going to do that every year, probably about 100 kids, and thanks to all the volunteers and the people who donated the bike helmets, we had a couple contractors, Stevenson, Deerbrook Builders, and Timberwood.
Let me interrupt you, did you see the fine article that was in The Voice about that?
Oh, yeah.
It was excellent, yeah.
It was.
If anyone didn't make it, Cindy does have some extra helmets.
Yep.
Building department, so they can still come in and get them.
Yep, we do have some helmets left over. Most of us went to the Michigan Township Association Conference last week, and I liked it, it was very beneficial, it's eye-opening. You know, the way I come out of that, you know, I, myself personally, I think local control, I think government closer to the people is better, and that's why we fight for, I fight for local control as much as we can. I know Pat's concerns a lot better than somebody in Lansing or in Washington, right, Pat? I might not always agree with you, but I know your concerns, so, but it was, it was a good conference, and the theme was for greater.
Greater.
Greater township, greater good.
Right, greater township, yeah.
Better good.
Greater good. So, and it was a good, positive conference. I just wanted to mention, too, last Thursday night, I was invited to, actually, it was a prayer meeting, where all the church, it was National Prayer Day, all the churches in the community got together and, and basically wanted to show some sort of united unity, and it was a good event. We had, First Alotos was there for the schools, and he basically, you know, asked, said what his problems were and what to pray for, and then actually myself and the new city manager and the mayor of Algenac came up, and there's some real unity going on there. It was a good, it was a good event, and then we had a couple doctors get up, and they speak about, you know, the medical part of it, mostly opiate problems, and we have going on, I mean, everywhere, it's not just here. And then, a couple people got up and talked about all the service organizations that we have in the community, and for a small community, it's amazing how much, how many service we do have. And it was, if anybody was there, I talked to a lot of people afterwards, they thought it was awesome, had over 200 people there, I'm guessing, and I bet you next year it'll be a lot more. Upcoming events, May 12th is going to be busy. May 12th is our Marsh cleanup, St. John's Marsh cleanup, 9:00 in the morning, you meet at DNR access site, right by, across by St. John's Marsh. Bring boots and gloves. We usually have quite a few people that show up for that, it's a good event, and we'll have hot dogs there for breakfast, so that's always fun. We have MDNR, Michigan DNR Boat Safety Course, May 12th, 9:00 AM here at the Hall, and also May 12th is our Color Out Cancer Run, starting at 9:00 AM at the high school and ending here in the park, so that's all we have going on, so thanks, everybody. Next, we have the Fire Chief's Report.
Good evening. For the month of April, I attended one meeting, and that was the County Chiefs Association. Several topics were brought up. Some problems were staffing problems amongst the fire departments, the training, some of the current training, that firefighters are going to have to do some continuing training through the state, and we also covered the mutual aid agreement, which was changed. The new officers have been put in place, and they're starting to implement their programs, so we'll be looking, moving forward in the fire department, getting some things implemented. Cameras for the security system have come in, all the wiring has been installed, we're just waiting for the police chief to help us install the cameras, and hopefully that should be done this week. And Captain Adler and I self assisted with the bike safety day.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, move right along, we don't have any unfinished business, new business, like I mentioned to the board and other people, I want to start doing roundtable discussions every meeting, like 15 minutes or so, on various topics, and tonight, we're going to be talking about the fire department. We do have some issues there, and like I told everyone in the board, you know, kind of dream what you think the perfect fire department would be, and, you know, that's where we want to go forward. And how to get there, that's our decision, how to make it there. And I gave you the assessment that the chief gave us, gave me, with different issues, and I wanted to open up and specifically tonight, talk about what manning our staff levels we want to staff our fire department at, and then after that, talk about our aging equipment and how we think we should replace that, or not replace it. Have different options. And on the staffing levels, how we want to staff our fire department, you know, we have a few different options. Right now, we have duty shifts, we're trying to, we have duty shifts most of the time, 24/7 on the mainland, we're trying to film on the island as we can. So, we do have different options, I just want the board to have a discussion on what they feel are, what the level of staffing the board would be comfortable. I mean, basically, we have options, no duty shifts, we have option of limited duty shifts with maybe just on the, on the mainland and none on the island, or a hybrid, a half here or half there, or some kind of a hybrid of that. Or we could try to do duty shifts on both, both stations, two people per both stations, And I don't know if there's any other options people can think of, that's, you know, ones I came up with, so.
Well, it appears to me that item number three, duty shifts on both stations, would be ideal, however, the cost is obviously maybe prohibitive, but if.
Right. Well, it's not prohibited. I mean, I figured out, we could do that, we would have to probably raise the millage up about a half a mil. I've talked to several people that, especially on the island, they're all, but they don't mind paying more for fire protection. Am I right to say that, Pat? And, but, you know, it all depends, like I say.
We have to have staffing to accommodate that as well.
What?
We have to have staffing to accommodate that.
Right. So, but like I say, if we have the.
Are we looking at what we want to do now, or what we want to do long-term?
Long-term, yeah.
Well, okay, long-term, absolutely, we want to staff those stations.
True.
Yeah, I would support that, of course I would.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. But there's so many facets to go along with that.
Right.
You know, and different caveats, and there's a cost, and then there's resources, and then there's, you know, additional gear, and then there's training, and then there's supervision, and the command staff.
Qualified firefighters.
Right, sorry?
Qualified firefighters.
Qualified firefighters, absolutely.
Local.
Yeah, and then, and all that comes at a cost, right? So, so, that's just labor. So, so that's just labor. We haven't talked about the resources of the Hall. And note that we have two, not one, but two. And then what's in the Hall, right? So, we've got equipment, right? We've got bunker gear. You've got jaws and, and pumper trucks and, you know, there's, here we go, on and on and on and on. This is a multi-million dollar issue, and nobody on this board belittles the point that we all wanna see improvement. But in the last fifteen to seventeen months, there's been significant improvement.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
On the fire department. And somehow, that seems to get lost in translation.
Our ISO went up, or actually down, improved.
We have a fantastic, highly qualified fire chief, right?
Yes.
We've retained some of our missing equipment. We've developed and are now implementing a new set of SOGs. We've hired a number of firefighters, and we need more.
Have two or three applicants?
I have three, yes.
We have three applicants just turned in this week.
We've upgraded all of our turnout gear, right? We've put in place a new command staff. We've shifted a status for a budgetary issue from ALS to BLS, and we're currently assessing our heavy equipment needs in a replacement schedule. So, this board is well aware of the issues that we have going on with the fire department, and I hope the public is educated enough to inform themselves of all the issues as well, because our job is to operate as one voice for the public. So, your input is really important to us. Be very simple for us to apply a millage and raise everybody's taxes and buy new equipment, upgrade the fire halls, and, you know, pray for resources on, on labor. But that's not the goal of a broad perspective. We'd like everybody's input and, and to make sure that this hybrid thing that we, we jump into, um, is gonna satisfy not only our immediate needs, but also our long-term needs. So, this is a very complicated subject, and I, I feel like maybe we don't get a chance to express some of the positive things that have gone on. And Chief, I'm, I'm really grateful for, for what you're doing and that you show up every day and, and the team you've assembled.
Thanks. I, I, I'm, I would like to staff both of them twenty-four-seven, both stations. Just for the being, um, and I could see some people on the island or on the mainland say, "Well, that really doesn't help us." Yes, it does, because we have four people twenty-four-seven, two on the one side of the river, two on the other. If there's a fire, I don't care where it is, we're, we're at least gonna have four people there with two engines real fast. Um, and, uh, that, that's my, my feeling. It's, uh, I think both sides of the river benefits, and, um, the people on the island, some places on the island, we can actually respond just as quick from the mainland as we can from the island, it's been proven, or, or really close, but other, other parts, you can't. And, I don't know, one thing I took away from the conference that we were at, you know, you don't wanna leave, forget about people, and we don't wanna forget about a third of our residents either. And, uh, you know, that's, that's my thinking also. If we, if we do twenty-four-seven on both stations, I calculated, uh, we'd have to raise the, the taxes a half a mil. Everyone's saying, "Well, what's that cost me?" If you have a two-hundred-thousand-dollar house, your taxable value is a hundred thousand, it's gonna cost you fifty bucks a year.
So now, let me just say, do, do we vote on that, or we can just do that?
We, we can...
We can just do that, so that's clear to the public, yes.
As a, on a special assessment. And, um, we'll have to have a public hearing, and, and that won't be till, when will we do that, in August? So...
Well, and I think it's good to point out as well that we...
Yeah, second.
For what, what we pay in taxes for the millage, for the fire department, we pay double that, if not triple that, for our garbage.
I know.
So, a third of what we pay for garbage pickup goes to our fire department, that we have to operate, try and operate, two stations, fully manned, with equipment that is functional and worthy. Um, I think it's been underfunded for a long time, and it needs to be addressed. And although I am more than happy to aim for twenty-four-seven, both sides of the river, I think we have bigger problems right now, because we have firefighters working a hundred hours overtime every week.
All right, we need more firemen.
Yep.
So, I think we have a staffing issue right now that we need to resolve as well.
And the equipment issue, too.
Yeah, we're gonna talk about that.
Basically, what I'd like to see is, as far as the staffing is concerned and everything, we draw a, a timeline, and we're here today with, with the current, uh, duty shifts, and then, well, a month from now, we, we increase the fire department, the manpower, and, and go to a specific timeline. Do it like a typical program management, and, uh, that's, that's my, one of my suggestions.
But just so you guys understand, this hundred hours is, one person had a hundred hours overtime.
Yeah.
Not the whole department. The whole department has more overtime hours than that. We have a major staffing issue right now.
That's not even safe.
Yeah, so...
For that person.
Right.
And they come and go. They come and go, even, no matter how well-meaning they are, things happen with their families and so on, so you have to anticipate that, too.
Yep.
Because it'll raise and lower manpower, so...
Well, the ones that we have now, they're all part-time jobs. They all work other places.
Yes, right.
And, and they have other obligations, and, uh, we have to recognize that. Um, that's, that's why we need more bodies, more numbers. Um, and, uh, and now that we have a command staff in place, I'm pretty confident we're going to get a good training program going. And with that being said, you're, you're gonna show a lot better retention of, of the people that we have also.
And it'll be very, much more professional and organized, yes.
I think we should throw in some incentive programs for the firefighters, whatever that may be, but we can put our brains together and figure out what that is.
Agree of what?
Whether it's a monthly dinner, or every six months, or some kind of awards. That's what these people look for.
Yep.
Believe me.
I agree. I agree. So, are we in a consensus?
Yes.
I'm in.
I'm in.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
Yeah.
Pat?
I don't wanna belabor the thing, because as we all know, it's a very complicated issue. You know, we can't have one department...
Do you have him come up here if he's gonna talk?
Come up here if you're gonna...
Thanks, Pat.
I appreciate the break in protocol to allow a little comment here. Um, I don't wanna belabor this, but it is a, you know, a totally unique situation. Geography is, is, is our biggest concern, right? And, and typically, when you have an emergency, you know, that's when, when everything goes to hell in a handbasket. So, here's, here's my suggestion, um, that you form a, a select committee of some concerned people from the island, right, to work with the chief and work with the township, you know, and, and come up with some workable solutions where we, this is, this is what, you know, the committee thinks will work. Um, you know, if it, it requires a millage, it requires whatever, okay, but, you know, somebody to advise you guys as to, you know, what the situation is over there. I think, I think that'd be very helpful.
Okay, thanks. Okay, anything else on staffing?
Do you think, Mr. Supervisor, that it'd be appropriate to discuss our mutual aid agreements?
Yeah, I mean, we can say it. We do have mutual aid. If there's a fire, you know, automatically, we call it Southwater, Elginak is toned out and Ira gets toned out. And if it's a situation that needs more fire departments, we can call them, as in Marine City, Baltimore, is that the right protocol?
You can call a strike team.
Yeah, call a strike team. Five, five departments, so...
So, there are resources.
Oh, yeah.
But they're just not ours.
Right.
But they're available to assist should we need them. So, you know, we're a little bit exposed, yes. We have staffing issues, yes, but we're, we're not quite up the creek just yet.
No, no, we're...
There's still plenty of levels of, of safety.
I think our fire department today is doing a lot better job than people realize and give credit for, but we, as a board, set a pretty high bar. Rightly so. We're not there yet, so we gotta work to get there. We had a week and a half ago, we had a chimney fire on the island called, we were there within, what, nine minutes? And then shortly after that, Ira and Elginak was both there, and the property owners were elated on, on how, how fast we were there. Two doors down was a, a member of the Detroit Fire Department, a captain or something, and he was like, like very impressed. So, like I say, nine minutes to go across a, a river and be on scene on a fire, you know, with, with four guys of our own in Elginak, we probably had fifteen people at that fire. And, uh, like I say, it, we're not broken, it's working, but we need to get better. So, that being said, on our aging equipment, um, if you read the, the chief's letter, we have old engines. We have basically four engines. The basic lifespan of a frontline engine is twenty years. Pumper, pumper tanker, whatever it is, is twenty years. After twenty years, you could put it as a backup or a secondary for maybe another ten years. Um, I, uh, where's that letter? I'm not sure. Our, our, our equipment is fairly well-aged. Um, we've been, there's a township, and this isn't us, but years ago, had a policy of buying used equipment. Like, I know we've got a couple engines from Chesterfield or Northville, one in Chesterfield, I mean, they beat it hard when we got it. We put a lot of money into it. We probably could've bought a new tanker over the years for the money that we put into it, and it's still a POS, sorry to say, but it is. And, uh, it, it's tough. Um, uh, what's our, our newest engines on the island? That's a two thousand two?
Two thousand two, yes.
Two thousand two, that's our newest engine. I know some of the firemen would rather see it over here, but I'm sorry, the island taxpayers bought that engine, so it's over there. Um, and this is before the, you know, the merger. So, like I say, all our frontline stuff is past the age where it should not be frontline. Uh, at best, it should be backup or sold, gone somewhere. Um, I gave you a, a plan that the chief put together. It's basically, we're buying four engines, probably selling five. We're reducing one, right, chief?
Yes.
Um, and everyone says, "Well, how do you pay for that?" We could do, this is option, one of our options I put down. I'm suggesting we go to the voters in August and ask for a, a millage to pass, pass a two-million-dollar bond, and, uh, we'll let the voters decide. It would cost approximately, was it point three-five?
Point three-three.
Point three-three mils, uh, the first year. As the property values go up, the amount of the mils go down. So, at the end, it will probably be maybe, it's estimated maybe a quarter, quarter mil. So, again, point three-three, two thousand, two-hundred-thousand-dollar house, hundred-thousand-dollar value, it's gonna be thirty-three bucks a year. What that would get us is four new engines, uh, and these are brand-new, first-class engines, not the, not the, the, they're, they're not Ugos, let's put it that way. Uh, we priced out Pierce, uh, they're the top-of-the-line trucks, and we want them all the same company. It's just easier for training, uh, that you have the same pumps, pump set and everything else across the board. Um, like I say, we'd probably sell five. Um, and if we did this, we put it to the, to the voters, that money could only be used for capital improvement, not, not for operations or anything else. We would have a little bit more money to buy new engines for the boats, which are in desperate need. All of our engines are way past operating hours, and also, uh, a little bit of improvements on the building. The, we need a new roof on the island, we need to finish the kitchen, the bathrooms over there, we need some work done over here.
So, what you're saying, Ari, the weakest point in the fire department is the equipment aspect?
Yes, and...
Because without the equipment, it's not gonna make any difference what we have out there.
And, and everything goes in hand-in-hand. Like, I'm not for buying one piece of equipment or replacing a, a outboard motor until the chief says, "You know what? We have good policies in place now for maintenance and for taking care of it, because we didn't before."
Right.
And I'm not for spending one nickel until those policies and procedures are set in place. And that's one thing I, I, I'm gonna really, really stress. Um, otherwise, if we don't do something like a bond, we'd have to look at really replacing an engine or two a year, which would be very challenging and, and difficult, and, okay, you know, if you got two arms bleeding, which one do you put the Band-Aid on first? Or we can do nothing. Problem is now, too, our maintenance costs are extremely high on the equipment that we presently have. We're, we're spending a lot of money yearly on regular maintenance costs on getting these things, uh, pumped, the pumps tested and, and everything else. Uh, and that money could be saved and deployed in other places in operations. Um, I don't know, does anyone have anything to say, or, I mean, or if you come up with any other options?
Well, there's, there's a lot of detail in that with, with the maintenance aspect. I mean, we can also have in-house certified people to do the pump testing and hose testing if we wanna train them at, and, obviously, it can be part-time basis, too. But assuming that we get all this in place with the three-point-three mils, as I discussed earlier with the clerk, is a replacement plan. You know, twenty years from now, we're gonna find ourselves in the same boat.
Mm-hmm. Renew it.
So, well, yeah, we can renew it, but I was, I was thinking more of a putting, uh, you know, some money that we get, and on, on an annual basis, put something in the fire department fund, just for equipment.
Right.
Well, and I believe in the past, when the fire department had a fund balance, um, what kinda got us in this predicament is the millage was lowered, because they had a fund balance, and they ran that fund balance out. So, the fund balance has been running out for what, three years now?
Yeah, what, what happened a few years, I'm not sure exactly when, we had a new fire truck, and there was an accident, they rolled it, and it got totaled. So, we got, the fire department got a big payout, or pay-in, and instead of replacing that truck, they went out and bought a used one from Chesterfield, is that where we got that one? Two, two from Chesterfield. And, like I say, we put more money in those two trucks than, uh, than we ever should've, just to keep them going. And, um, um, so, and now, they're, they're, you know, the guys, they don't even wanna drive them. And I sure hate to put more money into that, into these things. So, yeah, a replacement plan, I, I, I agree a hundred percent. And, but that's how we got into, into the, and, and then, like I say, the fund balance, it was two or three administrations ago, it's, "Oh, we got this fund balance." You know, "We got an election coming up, let's drop the, the, the millage a quarter mil." So, they did, and they got voted out anyhow. Am I right? So, what do you do? You know?
It, it's, it's a, it's a difficult scenario. And, you know, this is seven-digit stuff. This is, this is not ammunition for twenty-five-hundred bucks, you know, to go to the range. This is, this is a huge expense. So, this is a smart board. Um, this is an educated board. Um, we've got a great chief, so, you know, it's, it's our duty to kinda reach out to the constituents and, and get a feel for, for what the public wants, and, and then hopefully have some, some real hard discussions on the best way to implement this. But in a perfect world, yeah, we're gonna pull the trigger on all this stuff, right? We're, we're gonna have our resources. But, you know, I, I'm, here's where I'm gonna veer off a little bit, is, is, we, we can have all the best trucks and, and pumpers and, and... the best trucks and pumpers and engines in the world, but if we don't have good resources to utilize them, you know, it doesn't make any sense to me. So, Mark, I'm just going to disagree just a little bit on the assigning of value here. I think the resources, the employees, the people, the firefighters, the boots on the ground, you know, they have my attention more than the equipment at this point. But once that's in place, you know, I'm going to be quick to shift. I'm going to be quick to shift. But we've got to get some resolution and, you know, everybody's got to be this Clay Township, you know, organization or our community. We've got to bring it in. Reel it in. And I feel like we're close, and I know that, you know, you three in particular, along with the chief, have been, you know, really giving it a lot on your efforts and your union negotiations, and that's on top of all your daily duties. So, you know, I love the progress that you made, I love the effort levels, and I hope that, you know, we get resolution with our personnel.
I mean, nobody likes to pay taxes, nobody on this board likes to pay taxes, but it's this board's duty to provide the best public service or public safety as we can, reasonably that we can afford. Like I say, right now, most of our residents is paying more for garbage than they are for fire protection. So, anything else?
I'd just like to comment what Chris said, that you're not veering away from my, from me at all, because obviously, the manpower is the major asset in this whole scheme of things.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. All right.
How well I know, I speak from personal experience, if you've never were a firefighter, you, you-
Firewoman Joanne.
I was assistant chief at one time, way back in the beginning, about quite a few years ago. And it's not easy, especially, you know, the island, the mainland, trying to get people.
Right.
The days of volunteers are gone. Yep, we have to pony up.
Well, I ran in-house, private emergency response personnel for 30 years, all volunteer.
Days are gone.
So, I know, I know how it goes.
Gone, days are gone, yep.
All right, well, I'm going to close the discussion now, and we'll pick it up next, our next meeting that we have on the island. Next, we have Resolution 2018-16, submitting for bond proposal. We do have Tom here and Bill Roush, if we have any questions. Basically, what, if we want to put this on the August ballot, we have to have this resolution passed by May 15th, which is, this is-
The 7th.
Yeah.
Before our next meeting.
Before our next meeting. And this is to put to a question to the voters of Clay. I'll have my amendment. Where's the, oh, here it is. Shall the Township of Clay, St. Clair County, Michigan, borrow the principal sum not to exceed $2,070,000 in an issue in general obligation unlimited tax bond payable over a period not to exceed 20 years from the date of issuance? In other words, what we're trying to do, is get a big fat check for $2 million, so we can get all this equipment that is needed and improvements. The township, okay, let me start over. Okay, so we got not to exceed 20 years for the bond, to be used by the township for the purpose of paying the cost of acquiring, installing equipment for the fire department together with building and site improvements. The estimated millage will, to be leveled in 2018 would be .33 mills, and the estimated simple average annual millage rate to retire the bonds, this is at the end of the bond, the cycle of the bond, will be .27 mills. That's basically what it is. And like I said, it can only be used for capital expenditures, basically. Tom, you want to come up? Board's never met you guys, so.
I don't think I'll be here.
Yeah, in 20 years. So, hi, Tom.
Good, hi, Ernie. So, Tom Coles with Miller Canfield, so we have the pleasure of representing the township as your bond council. So, when it comes to issuing any type of debt that you're bonding for, and again, as Ernie said, you can only issue these types of bonds for capital items. So, we would actually draft the documentation, if it gets approved by the voters, if you decide to put it forth at the August election, it gets approved. We then work with Bill Roach, who's at Hutchinson-Shockey, who's the financial advisor for the township. So, I'm the legal guy, he's the numbers guy. So, projections as to interest rates and taxable value growth and those expectations, Bill and his office put that together. We assist with making sure that whatever bonds are issued are pursuant to state and federal tax laws and comply with all those requirements. So, as the supervisor has said, the bond proposals are very specific as to what state law requires to be in there. So, in essence, who's borrowing, how much, how long, and for what purpose. And if approved and bonds are issued, they can only be used for that purpose. And you can only levy millage to cover debt service on these bonds. So, the purpose is limited, and the tax levy that comes along with it is only to pay, so actually, when you determine that annually, you're going to look and say, how much debt service do I have coming due the next year? What's my taxable value? And how many mills do I need to pay that? That's, that's all you really can use those mills for. So, you can adjust some of the language as to the purpose, but the rest of the question really is state law-specific. Ernie and I had a question last week of, you know, all this millage, the average annual millage language can be a little bit confusing, but the statute requires it, and the idea is, we have the first millage rate of .33 that we're estimating, and then you, you're estimating an interest rate that you'd be able to sell the bonds at for the next 20 years, and you're projecting the taxable value for the township for the next 20 years. So, some, some pretty big estimates involved there. What the state law says is just let the taxpayers know kind of what the average rate will be over the life of the issue. So, the actual last year would be about .21, if you look at the chart, but an average of .27. So, that's where those two numbers come from, would be, the overall average, if taxable values continue to increase at a reasonable rate, would be about point, about a quarter of a mill, as Ernie was saying. So, I'm happy to answer any questions on the ballot itself, whether the language can be changed here or there, but again, specifically only for capital items, so you can't use this for any staffing issues or anything like that. Tax-exempt debt can only be for capital items.
Does anybody have any questions?
So, we just have to okay this and then-
If we want to put it on the August ballot.
On the August ballot.
Where's the actual verbiage on the ballot?
That's actually at that Exhibit A.
This Exhibit A, right here.
So, that last page, yep, that's, so that's, so we, you know, the ballot would actually have the little box yes and no below it, but that would be the language itself, specifically that would go in front of the voters at August.
And we can't put any examples in there on how much it would, is that what you're saying?
No, so what you end up doing, right, so that's actually not for the ballot, so what typically happens is that anybody that's voting a bond issue would have some type of information that would go along with it to the voters, so whether that's something that the township produces, I know the schools do this when they vote their bond issues, again, you're allowed to put factual information out there, so to the extent you have those examples that Ernie was talking about, if you have a $200,000 home, you know, your taxable value is about $100,000. So, those averages per person, that usually comes from information that's submitted, not actually part of the ballot itself.
Right, we can't say vote yes or vote no, but we can say, this is how much it'll cost you.
Right.
This is what it's going towards.
Right.
We're going to replace these five trucks with these four trucks.
Yes, if you get to the point where we get into the election cycle, there's a whole thing on do's and don'ts for what the board can do in connection with campaigns, and there's campaign finance law restrictions on that. So, in essence, you can disseminate factual information.
But, but the thing is, we don't have to put it on the August ballot.
No.
Right.
No, we can postpone this and put it-
On the next one.
On the November if the board wishes, but if you want it on the, if you want it on the August ballot, we have to approve it tonight.
So, if we approve it-
It doesn't mean we have to do it.
Right. I'm going to ask for a vote, and you can vote yes or no.
If we approve it, we can also withdraw it and not be on, is that what you're saying?
I don't believe it can be withdrawn.
No.
So, we can't withdraw?
Not after we, we put it in on May 15th.
Because the resolution directs the, to go to the county clerk and to, you know, basically whoever's running the election to say, hey, we're putting this on the August election. If you want it to wait till November, the deadline for that is August 14th.
Right.
So, it's a 12-week deadline to get ballot proposals before the, before the particular election.
Well, based on necessity, I think.
Any more discussion or questions? I just want to let the board know, by the way, Tom and Bill in the back, they're the ones handling the bond for the Colony Water project, too, and they're, they're doing a great job, and actually, I believe they're saving the township quite a bit of money on this, if we do it, and the Colony Water project. So, we're keeping them busy.
We like it.
How long does the township have to expend the funds?
That's a great question. So, you have three years from the date of issuance to spend that money. So, to the extent that you want to kind of schedule in a little bit of when you're buying particular pieces of equipment or making building improvements, you have three years. Now, it doesn't mean that after that third year, you have to give the money back. It means that there are some restrictions as to how you invest it going forward, but typically, three years is the norm for spending, is the requirement for federal tax law purposes for spending your proceeds. Let's just say you approve this and you had, you know, at the end of that third year, you still had a couple hundred thousand dollars left. As long as you have a plan to expend those funds within a timely period, and IRS doesn't define timely, but if you have a plan to expend that within a certain period of time, you know, say another year or so, what you end up doing is, you restrict what you're investing the proceeds at. So, because the money's going to come in, like, you're going to get a check or a wire, it's going to go into your construction fund, and you're going to earn interest on that. Hopefully, you'll earn more interest in there that you're paying out and yielding your bonds. But to the extent you, in year three, if you are in that situation, which would be great, nobody really is at this standpoint, all you would really do is restrict how much you're earning in that fund to what you're paying out in your bonds, and you still get, you know, can keep those funds and still maintain them. But I would think overall, think three years is the, is the rule. My pleasure.
All right. Does anyone have any more discussion on this resolution? I guess I had to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2018-16, submitting the bond proposal to the county. That's all, that's the title of it, Resolution Submitting Bond Proposal.
Support. Motion of support. Any discussion?
We're, oh, man, I just feel like this is such a big deal, this is such a big number. I don't know that-
Well, it is, but we have the duration between now and August to put our fact sheets together so that we can inform our residents, but ultimately, we're leaving it up to them. We're not making this decision for them, which is the whole reason why I don't have an issue putting it on the ballot. So, between now and August, our job is going to be to make sure our residents are informed as to what we need and how we're going to spend it. So, we need to, in the next coming months, put that paperwork together.
That, and like I say, we could just raise the taxes .33 mills to cover this, but by doing a bond, it restricts us on what we can spend it. We could raise the taxes .33 and spend it on anything, you know? But this restricts us-
And that makes more sense to the public.
It makes more, it makes more sense to me, too.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, if I'm not here, I mean, I want this money going for where it's intended for, and nothing else.
And that's kind of the issue they had before, when they got the money, the check for that truck, they ended up using it for payroll and operating expenses, it didn't go back into equipment in the department. So, it's kind of important to me to see that if we're going to do this type of, this type of money, that it goes to where we intended to go.
Yep, I agree.
Any discussion? Any more? Roll call vote, please.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Ernie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Sandy Kufal.
Yes.
Chris Oregan.
No.
Okay, it passes, six to one. And next, we have the adoption of the fire department's standard operating guidelines. These have all been reviewed by our legal counsel and our fire chief. And a lot of them are actually, we've gotten from like Michigan Municipal League and a few others for best practices.
Anybody wants to review them really quick? The book's at the end of the table?
Yeah, it's that encyclopedia at the end of the table, but we need to prove them, so we actually have a working document that, that has some teeth into it.
Make a motion to approve the 2018 Fire Department Standard Operating Guidelines that have been developed, most recently with Chief Rose.
Support.
Motion of support, any discussion?
Do, I'm sorry, do the firefighters have to read and/or acknowledge the SOGs?
Each firefighter will get a thumb drive with all our SOGs on it.
Yep.
They will be able to read those.
Yep.
We plan on, or I plan on, every business meeting, to take a couple at a time and go through them and read them, to make sure that they understand them.
They give us a signed receipt.
They get the same flash drive that we prepared for everyone on the board.
So, but you also have a hard-
We'll have a hard copy at the station.
Yep, that's the hard copy station.
But maybe suggestion is, as you're issuing thumb drives, they just acknowledge that they've received one.
We, yes, they will, they'll have to sign for them, yep.
Perfect, thank you. I should have just said that.
The other thing, too, is if they don't understand them, we need to educate them on them, too. So, I plan on, if I have to read everyone to them, they're going to understand them. Because I don't think in the past that, that-
And also, within those SOGs is our training guidelines that, you know, our captain or whoever's going to be training down there is going to need for them to also go through, correct?
Definitely, and then you've got different, different areas of the fire department that the SOGs pertain to, and if those people are, you know, that's their expertise, that's where those SOGs will come into play, and they'll have to read those along with the training of that area.
Are the SOGs any part of the union contract?
They reviewed them.
They reviewed them, yes.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor of adopting the fire, the standard operating guidelines for the fire department, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Next, we have Resolution 2018-15, Michigan Public Safety Communication System Integration Agreement. What this is, I'm sorry, Chris, I kind of misled you, I thought it was something else earlier. This is a maintenance agreement. We use, this is for the state lien, and we get on the, we use the state for a lot of our communications. And what this is, basically, it's a maintenance agreement with the state that they'll fix any problems on their end. Why it has to be 20 pages for agreement with the state of Michigan is beyond me.
That's how they do things.
But, that's what it is.
It's actually a 28-page resolution. Oh, no, no, there's a separate resolution for the 28 pages.
Yeah, we got a separate resolution for the 28 pages.
Make a motion to approve Resolution, Revelation, Resolution 2018-15, to approve the Michigan Public Safety Communications Systems Integration Agreement with the Township of Clay, County of St. Clair, St. Clair, Michigan.
Support.
Motion of support, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Ernie Bryson.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Sandy Kufal.
Yes.
Chris Oregan.
Yes.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have Treasurer's Stipend. Um- Chrissy's been with us for over a year now and doing a great job, I might add. She, she's probably gone to more training than any treasurer has done in this township in the last 30, 40 years, all-inclusive, this past year. Doing a great job. She's actually reconciling our cash accounts every month, which is never, well, they reconcile them, but they're never balanced. When I walk by Chrissy's office, I hear her complaining, "I'm $130 off." I'm thinking, what is it like? How much, what's the number of your reconcile every month?
It's a lot.
A lot. I'm thinking, close enough, but she gets right to the penny. And she's taken on a lot of duties that are above and beyond our statutory duties. And as you're aware, we pay our regular salary for statutory duties and a stipend for the non-statutory duties. And we, as a board, have control over that. Chrissy hasn't been getting that. We have been giving our deputy treasurer an additional stipend. And basically, what I'm asking the board to do, that we give Chrissy her regular stipend that was budgeted for, and we'll pull the additional stipend away from the deputy treasurer. And she is well aware that that's what we're going to do, too. There's no issues there. So everybody?
Because she had to do them until we got a new treasurer.
Right, yeah, she had to help out and we outsourced.
Outsourced it.
A lot of the reconciliation with our auditors. And that was costing us 1,500 bucks a month.
Twelve grand.
And we've been doing that forever and then some. One, two, three. As you say, she did like the last six, seven, seven months all by herself. In October 17th, there was a $10 unresolved difference.
Which I will eventually find.
Which she will find or pay it. Or pay it.
I don't know about paying to our plus.
Yeah, it might be to the plus, so.
Mr. Supervisor, I'd like to make a motion?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we activate the treasurer's stipend per her employee agreement and then we also, at the same time, remove the additional stipend for the deputy, remove the additional deputy stipend.
Support.
Yeah, motion of support, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Okay, next, this one kind of caught us blindsided. For our BSNA software, it's our enterprise, you guys, yeah, no problem. See you guys later. See you in a month.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Drive safe. Our BSNA software is our enterprise software, really manages all the functions in the township. And there's a lot of databases involved with that. Microsoft Server, it's called SQL Server, SQL. It manages databases. With the normal license that we buy for Microsoft Server, it comes with a built-in SQL Lite, if you will, in it. And it's been running fine for years. There was about three, four weeks ago, we could not open and get into our utility billings. And it was airing out, there's not enough room with the SQL Server. The Microsoft SQL Server Lite, I can't remember if it's 10 gigs, has a limit of data that it will manage. I believe it is 10 gigs. Once you get over that limit, it won't work. It wants you, Bill Gates, well, not Bill anymore, but Microsoft wants you to buy the actual SQL Server to manage the larger databases. In other words, they give a free one for smaller databases. We outbrew that. To get us up and going, we had to delete how many years of old water billings?
Well, we originally did six months, then we did a year. And now she's, we got rid of a lot more last week.
Right. To keep it running, we had to actually get rid of some of our, we didn't have to get rid of it, we archived it.
Right.
So if we do need the information, we can pull it up. But the only, only resolution, and I've talked to BSNA and our IT people, is that we buy the SQL Server with licenses, I believe it put in 15 licenses, or is it 12? I don't have it in front of me. And it's going to be a cost of $4,049.84. Come out of line item 101, 265, 760.
My first thought when I reviewed that is that it's not as simple as putting that old stuff on a external drive, huh?
No, no, it's not.
No, but I will say, when we discussed this with our old IT company, it was quite a bit more expensive.
Yes. Yes. The agreement we have with the new people, you know, they're going to install it for free. I mean, basically, the cost is, what you're looking at is for the license from Microsoft. And I don't care who you buy it from, where you buy it from, it's the same. So we'll probably just buy it directly online and give us a new activation license and they'll have to install it. And this will keep us going for a long, long, long time.
I'll say that's probably due in part to a lot of our employees actually learning the BSNA system.
And using it right.
And using it. And using what it's meant for, which, you know, is a double-edged sword because now we're out of data.
We're attaching.
Well, we're using it, so.
Is the security in the system going to accommodate the new SQL?
Oh, yeah. Yep, just as it was the SQL Lite. What we're doing, like in assessing and the building department, we're scanning a lot of pictures. So when they bring up a particular house or anything, you see a picture of the house, the building plans or whatever, and that's taking up data, too. So I was just talking to somebody with, in a larger city, what they're doing, they're even scanning the large building drawings and attaching that to the particular properties in BSNA. So they don't have to keep, we have a mountain of drawings and building plans, so.
This server will give us some expandability for several years to come?
Oh, yeah. I don't think there's a data limit on the regular SQL server. I, it's actually certified with managing SQL servers 100 years ago, now about 15 years ago. And, I mean, this is something that, you know, GM, I know Piper Aircraft, we were using the regular SQL server and we had mountains of, a whole bank of hard drives, let's put it that way, on a Unix server.
Who's going to be downloading that?
Our IT company.
IT company, okay.
Well, that being said, Mr. Supervisor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the purchase of the SQL server in the amount of $4,049.84, arriving from line 101 dot 265 dot 760 dot 00.
Support. Motion of support. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. We have estimate for our KSI tax billing. Chrissy, you got this one, didn't you?
Yes. This is just the twice-a-year bill, billing from KCI. They prepare our bills and mail them out. So it is $844.10 for printing of the bills and an estimated $2,009.7 for postage.
We used to do this in-house. And it is so much cheaper to outsource it than, I mean, we figured, we can't even print it for this amount.
Sounds insane, but yes.
We can't even buy the paper and the envelope and print it for this amount.
The machine to do it, too.
They do it all and it's.
And they do do it for probably 100 different.
Right.
Government entities.
They're pretty big. Same, the same people we use for our water bill.
I'll make a motion to approve the KCI summer tax billing at $2,853.17, $844.10 from line item 101, 253, 740, and $2,009.7 from line item 101, 253, 730.
Support.
Okay, motion of support, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Next, we have a CD renewal. Chrissy, you want to take that one?
CD renewal for the perpetual care account.
Yep.
It matured on the first, so we have 10 calendar days. And I included a little graph. It's easier to see in color, but right now, interest rates are going up every couple weeks. So some of the training that I've been in the past couple of weeks, they're suggesting that interest rates are going to increase once more significantly, if not another time after that. So I am recommending the 120-day on this CD in anticipation of rates going up later in the year.
And then after the 120 days, we can tie it up, tie it up at a higher interest rate.
Was that a motion?
Was that a motion?
Sure, it's a motion.
Support.
Yeah, motion of support, any discussion?
So I will let you guys know, the actual CD for perpetual care, the actual CD of money stays always in a CD until there is no more township, so that the money left in there will then take care of the cemetery, if that should ever come to pass. But the township does get to pull the interest when we renew the CD to use for the apparition of the cemetery.
That's what it's for. Okay. All right, no more discussion. All in favor of renewing the CD to 120 days, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Next, I have, we always had, for our wire department, we operated under a rate study that our auditors would give us. I know we had one, how long was Plant Moran's? Yeah, it was for seven years or something.
Seven years.
This is seven years. It's been seven years since we've had it done. And I requested a proposal from our current auditors to do this for us. What they do, they look at our existing, you know, status of the wire department and sewer department, money revenues that we're taking in, they look at how we're charging for things. They look at our infrastructure, what's coming up in the next five years that we know of and past that. And they will give us a recommendation on what they believe we should be charging. And they're even going to do a study of what the other communities are charging. And the price to do this is between five and not to exceed $7,000. And they're also suggesting that they do annual review and ask not to exceed $500 annually. So it just makes, gives us confidence as a board that we're not just guessing that, you know, the ship's going the right way. The state's going to actually require this. They, starting for the sewer, it's going to, if it's not in a year, I bet you, they're going to require us to have some sort of a study because, you know, what a lot of communities are doing, they say, oh, we're going to not charge enough or, their infrastructure falling apart around them. And this is basically to ensure that, you know, we have enough funds, if they're run right, to replace our infrastructure going forward if needed and to maintain it.
We're talking about what, filters and?
Well, the water plant, there's filters every seven years, you know, we got to pop for about 600 grand for filters. Yeah, so let's make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the water rate study not to exceed, water and sewer rate study not to exceed 7,000.
What? And we do have support, okay. And then part of this, we might get reimbursed from our SOL grant that's coming up pretty soon. That's the sewer asset, what's the W for?
Waste.
Waste, wastewater grant.
What's the timing on that? Does it, how long does it take in the?
Well, we're good to the end of the year as far as our old rate study.
Okay.
But that's why, I mean, we have time, but I imagine we'll probably get into it after our regular audit. So I'm guessing probably November, December.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Speaking of budget, we need to set a couple workshops dates and actually Cindy just threw these dates up. Do they work? This is a Friday at 1:00 PM.
Those are Friday dates. I personally would prefer Thursday, but that's actually.
We can do Thurs, it doesn't matter to me.
I don't know what everybody else's schedule is.
I'll probably plug into my calendar, so.
Yeah, May 18th might be tough.
Yeah.
Is that the breakfast for emergency?
Yeah, that's the breakfast day for emergency, yeah.
Yeah.
So Thursday?
What's May 17th look for everybody?
I will be out of town on the 17th.
You'll be out of town 17th? And that's the 18th?
Correct, I come.
That's a what, Thursday?
Yeah. I think we'll be back by 1 o'clock.
Yeah.
We will be back.
Make it 2 o'clock to make it comfortable for you guys to get back?
We'll be, we'll be back by 1.
We won't be that far, we're in Marysville.
No, yeah. Yeah, we'll be out of there by 11. We're okay at 1.
Yeah.
The 18th?
Yeah. Does that, do these states work for everybody?
Yeah.
The 18th?
I'm good with the 18th. Let me check the first.
These are our public meetings.
June 1st is what date is that, a Friday?
Friday.
Friday.
Yeah, I'm okay with the 1st as well.
Okay.
I'm good for both states.
Mark's already got him in his calendar.
All right. Someone want to make the motion?
Make a motion to set the budget workshop dates, May 18th at 1:00 PM and June 1st at 1:00 PM.
Support.
Motion of support, any more discussion? Hearing none. All signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Okay, that's it. Board member comments? Cindy?
Well, for those of you that are here, there is voting tomorrow. There's an election for the school miller, so make sure you come out and vote. For those of you that may be watching on Tuesday, there is voting today. Make sure you get out and vote.
Okay, until 8 o'clock at night, right? Or, no, seven?
Tuesday, Tuesday till 8:00 PM.
7:00 and morning to 8:00 PM.
Yes. So any of you that are here, you can be there at 7:00 AM. Anybody else might not see this till what, 2:00 in the afternoon?
Yeah, noon.
Noon. If you're watching this on YouTube and it's Tuesday, you got a couple hours, get out and vote.
Joanne?
Well, I got refreshed at the MTA convention with some conference, rather, with some good workshops, educational workshops. But I think the highlight to me was being able to carry our brand-new flag.
Which is where?
Which, where is it? I wanted to show it off. Every year, I wanted to carry the flag in this opening ceremony, but we'd ever had one. And they said, what do you want to do that for, Joanne? And I said, because I have pride in the township and I want to carry the flag with all the other ones that are doing it, with, when they, you know, announce the colors and all that. So that was a highlight for me. Well, you see the flag. It's unique.
Guess we're going to have to have a big unveiling now.
Where is it?
It's in front of my office.
Oh, okay.
Mark?
I'd just like to say that, you know, anytime you approve millages, it's going to impact the residents as far as cost is concerned. But I think these and what we approved tonight is something that we really need to do and is going to be very beneficial for the community.
Well said, Mark.
Thank you.
Sandy?
First of all, I'd like to thank you, Artie. When we went on our conference, you didn't hesitate to guide us to some influential people and a lot of people that I was, had the pleasure of being introduced to. And you were very welcoming with that, and I appreciate that. I enjoyed our discussions tonight in the Fire Department. I look forward to some more. They're hard discussions to have because so many people have so many different opinions. But, like the clerk said earlier, it is our job to inform the people of their choices, and they can let us know the direction that we want them, that they want us to take, so.
Thank you. Chris?
Well, Artie, I work for myself, as a lot of board members know. And my work takes me all over southeastern Michigan, anywhere from Lansing to Midland and all the way down in the southeastern corner. My wife works down in Detroit. Very few of my clients are actually local. So, I guess what I'm getting at is that recently I built a house in Clay Township. So, I'm sort of putting my money where my mouth is. I'm choosing to live here, not because I have to, but because I want to. I want a long, prosperous life here in Clay Township. And with that being said, our township needs a school district that can thrive, operate, and the kids can be safe in a good environment. So, with all that, that's why I'm voting yes tomorrow. And I'm going to encourage those who are watching to really consider your votes. Consider your property values, consider everything that it affects. And I'm going to encourage you to vote yes with me. Thank you.
Thanks.
I would just like to say how much I appreciate all of the help and the support that everyone in the office has provided me over the past year. I don't think sometimes that the office staff gets the appreciation that it deserves. And so, I just want everyone to know, we really do have a great, helpful, mindful front office.
Thank you. We do have a wonderful staff, I might add, say, too.
Every time I come in here, they're just busy at work.
I deal with some, and the thing of it is, is positive. They're all positive. They want to be here. They want to help. Sometimes they deal with some challenging people. Oh my God, there's one person said to me...
Sidebar.
Should I not do it?
Yeah, let her rip.
Might help fill out the absentee ballot. How do I vote no? You fill in the circle next to no. But, no, that's, I'm thinking he had a hard time reading it. But, yeah, that being said, you know, like I, back of the Fire Department and everything, I don't like to pay taxes, but, and I'm not going to want to spend a nickel if the voters do approve this in August. I'm not going to want to spend a nickel until we have all the processes and procedures to make sure they're wise investments. What we buy and how we're going to take care of it going forward, we're going to pay a lot of attention on preventive maintenance. We don't have any records down here. It wasn't, there was so much that wasn't maintained down there for years. We didn't, we didn't even know who had what equipment out, what members. I mean, it was scattered all over the, more than just the township. And, and there wasn't, it wasn't tight. And Chief's tightened it up. And he's got a command staff now to help him, and I'm very positive about it all going forward, so. That being said, anyone want to make a motion?
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Support.
Thank you. Thanks for all the coming to everybody.
Aye.
Yeah, you don't have to vote. Actually, you don't have to vote for that one. Thumbs up. Give me a thumbs up. You know, we can do that. I learned. I can say...